Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education for August 19, 2019. We'll start with our role, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is president. President Johnson?
Here.
President.
We have a quorum that'll take us to item two, and Mrs. Bradford, would you lead us in pledge there?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again and welcome. As I said, this is the regular meeting of the Board of Education for August 19, 2019. For anyone in the audience who wants to follow along with our agenda, you can go out the left side door and there's a table to the right that has the agendas, as well as the blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board tonight. Being that this is a regular meeting, you probably won't see as much discussion on the items that come before the board. That's because most of the items have already been discussed on at least two occasions during our study sessions and our committee of the whole. If you really want to see the in-depth discussion, either watch our committee of the whole or watch it taped and you'll see that discussion. One of the things that I always do at the beginning of our meetings, it's become my habit, is to read our district climate goal. And that reads that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where students and adults respect and value one another. And what does that look like? Well, that looks like what you see at the board table. We may not always agree on items, there may be significant discussion, but we always respect one another, we listen to each other's positions, and we come to a consensus one way or the other. That's the way we treat anyone who comes before the board, that is the way the cabinet treats each other, that's the way the cabinet teaches, treats the board, and the board treats the cabinet. And all we ask is that this is the best way we can give an example to our children, is how we conduct ourselves. And we just ask that anyone who comes before the board and addresses the board treats us with the same respect that we will give to them. And that's the way we conduct our meetings. So, welcome everyone, and we're going to start with item three, our communications, and A is introduction to student services coordinators. Mr. Archibald is going to handle that. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When you're done playing, just let us know.
First-class organization.
I'm almost there. I'm almost there, thank you. It is our pleasure this evening, as you know, we went a little bit out of order. We approved these positions last week and right in the background with respect to the student services coordinators and their credentials. And at this point, I would simply like to invite them up to the podium one at a time to, I guess, give their acceptance and provide a few brief comments. So first, we will have Megan Sproul. Megan?
Goodness. Good evening.
Good evening.
A lot of you here. I would just like to say thank you very much to Superintendent Oquist, to Assistant Superintendent Archibald, to all of the members of the board, and also to Dr. Terrell for this fantastic opportunity to serve the Livonia Public Schools in this new capacity. I've been with Livonia for 14 years now, and this is my third district that I've worked for, and every one of them I have loved. But Livonia is such a family, and I love that so much about what we do every day. We treat our students as part of our family, and I think that that shows in all we do. So I've just, I've learned so much about our unique programs that we offer for all of our learners here, and I look forward to continuing that work to support our students and our teachers, to achieve great things in our community. Our families come from all over to access our great educational programs, from our preschoolers all the way up through our post-high school programs. I'm just so grateful to be part of this innovative district that really goes above and beyond for students. I'd also like to introduce my family, who I brought along with me. My daughter Lauren, who is 14 and is going to be a 10th grader this year. My little one, but she's not so little anymore, Claire, is going to be a 4th grader this year. And then my husband Marcus, who has, this has kind of rocked all of our worlds a little bit, you know, first of all, coming back a few weeks early with the kids not quite in school yet, and he's just been so flexible and helpful in making this all work. And so I appreciate my family so much for all that they've done to help me be successful and to just grow in this fantastic school district. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wise move for Marcus. Next up, our additional student services coordinator, I'd like to invite to the podium to greet the board, is Kristin Jacobson-Harlem.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for having me. First, I'd like to express my gratitude to the school board members, Superintendent Oquist, Assistant Superintendent Steve Archibald, and Dr. Jennifer Terrell for this opportunity to serve the students, families, and staff in Livonia Public Schools as coordinator of student services. It has been such a great privilege to be able to work in this district in a wide variety of roles, ranging from a teacher of speech and language at Perronville, the old Perronville, to team leader at Frost Middle School alongside of Tony Abate and Shannon Wheeler, as well as a program specialist in our Resource Center kindergarten through 12th grade programs. I'm looking forward to the many more opportunities that I have to work with these families, and I want to say a special thank you to my work family, who's made this transition amazing and stressless and fun. So Katie Dodge, Carol Kerrigan, Libby Rogowski, Steve Taylor, Megan Sproul, and Jen. And also, finally, I'd like to thank my own family for being super supportive. My children Hannah, who is going to be going to Michigan State. My son John, who's going into junior year at Dexter. And Hayden, who's going to be a middle schooler. And finally, my husband Dave. Got a lot of transitioning to your house this year, don't you? Yes. Well, thank you.
Mrs. Oquist.
Thank you, President Johnson. Well, we are thrilled to be bringing you both into your new position. You are already an integral part of our student services family and our staff, and one of the things that we are so excited about is your commitment to the students that we serve and the colleagues with whom we work every day. One thing that came across to us loud and clear was your desire to move mountains or boulders or whatever else might be in the way for our staff so that they can do the essential and important work that's in front of them each day. Your passion and your commitment to our kids and to our district really has just shined, and we are thrilled to have, we feel so fortunate to be able to bring both of you on board. We initially, as I shared last week at our committee meeting, we initially had just one opening for student services coordinator, and we were thrilled with Dr. Terrell's advocacy and the support of Wayne County RISA to be able to have the funding to bring on an additional student services coordinator to really meet the needs of the growing programs that we have taken under our umbrella. So you are both so committed and dedicated and impressive, and we are thrilled to have you joining our administrative leadership team. So welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. And although this isn't a motion, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yes.
Just wanted to thank you and the entire student services staff. It is not more than every couple months when we run into somebody in our community who is raving about our special education services. Folks from all around this area moved to Livonia in order to access a lot of the services that we're able to offer, but it only happens with people. It doesn't happen with buildings and with books, it happens with people. So thank you so much for being part of a team that really reaches needs that go beyond the average, and being able to be leaders of groups of folks that can do that so well for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions? Thank you again. Just a note, I should have said before, we're going to take a short break after item four A, just to recognize our appointees tonight. So we'll go to item three B, our update from our superintendent, Mrs. Oquist.
Thanks, President Johnson. Well, we have enjoyed following Yashvan Ravan's journey, our amazing Churchill student, so I have an update for you. You might remember that Yashvan was selected as one of only four students in the United States to attend the International Chemistry Olympiad in Paris this summer. One of only four students in the country to represent the United States and to be part of this. Well, he earned the highest score on the U.S. team, placed 19th out of 300 participants across the world. He also had the second highest score of all 300 participants on the lab practical by earning 119 out of 120 points.
Wow.
How phenomenal is that? What an amazing accomplishment, and our congratulations to Yashvan, to his family, and a special thank you to all of the LPS staff members along the way who have worked with him and taught him and supported him and encouraged him. And really a special shout-out to Ron Upton, a teacher at Churchill, who has been a special mentor for him throughout this process. So overall, the U.S. earned three gold medals, one silver medal, and Yashvan was one of the gold medals, as well as one of the highest finalists and the highest in the United States. So can we give him some?
Yes.
So impressive. So we'll enjoy having him join a future board meeting, so we can congratulate him in person. Well, it is bounce-back-to-school time, so that is tomorrow night, and it looks like we have nice weather. So tomorrow evening, August 20, at Riley Upper Elementary, we invite our community to join us from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will have shuttles running on the 15-minute intervals from Roosevelt, which is just down Henry Rough. So bring your family and join the fun, and I know the snow cones will be plentiful because it's going to be a hot one. We have the ribbon cuttings for our new athletic fields. As you know, we are so proud of the work that's been done. We'll be sharing an update in September with all of you in our community. But at Franklin High School, we will be celebrating the ribbon cutting on Thursday, August 29, at 6:45, just prior to their first football game. And at Stevenson High School, we will have the ribbon cutting tomorrow evening, just before 7:00 p.m., prior to their first soccer game. So we are thrilled with the way those projects turned out, and we are excited to make it official, that they may begin use. This week, we have school tours at our elementary schools. So Buchanan, Cleveland, Coolidge, Grant, Hayes, Hoover, Kennedy, Randolph, Roosevelt, and Rosedale will all be hosting tours for new families on Wednesday, August 21, at 10:00 a.m., and Thursday, August 22, at 5:30 p.m. So please join the principal for a tour if you are new. We have all of our open houses, curriculum nights, and conferences on the web. We also had it in the latest issue of The Dialogue. These are really important evenings, so for our large viewing audience, for any of our parents out there and families, we encourage you to please take time to attend each of those. Our staff puts in an enormous amount of time preparing really important information and exciting and welcoming evenings, so we look forward to having you, and I think those begin next week, right? Yes, our first ones are next Wednesday. And just a huge thank you to our amazing LPS staff who have been working tirelessly to get ready to start the school year. They officially come back, our instructional staff officially comes back next Monday, and we are raring to go. So we're ready for a great school year, and again, appreciate the support and cooperation and partnership of all of our families.
That's it?
That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Oquist.
You are welcome.
That takes us to item three C, written communications. I don't, are there any written communications? I don't believe so. That takes us to item three D, our audience communication. And for those of you who may be new to our meetings, our audience communication is a time where audience members or members of the community get to address the board. It's not a question and answer, it's a time where they can speak and we will listen. Each speaker has three minutes. One of the things that we like to make sure everybody understands is that the board has three roles. Our first is to hire and evaluate our superintendent. Second is to create policy and endorse our policies, and the other is to align our budget to our long-term financial strategies. If your discussion or your issue deals with any one of those three items, then you might get a response from the board. If it deals with anything else, what we call our day-to-day operations of the district, it will come from our administration. So just make sure that everybody understands where responses may come from. I have one blue slip tonight, and it is Carla Longerbeam. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Thank you for having me. As you mentioned, I'm Carla Longerbeam. I'm a lifelong resident of Livonia, a graduate of Livonia Public Schools, and I have four children, two of which attend Livonia Public Schools, and I've been a host mom to three foreign exchange students, which have all gone to Livonia Public Schools. So pretty familiar with the school system here. And two of my children have been attending Buchanan Elementary School under the Livonia School of Choice program, which has been a real blessing to our family. We are a blended family, and we have their dad who has to drive from the other side of the city and my side of the city, and School of Choice has been a real blessing for our family. But part of that program does require that we arrange our own transportation, which our family has happily done for the last five years. However, my oldest daughter will be attending Riley Upper Elementary School this fall. And the reason I wanted to come here tonight and talk to the board is that I attended a new student orientation this past spring where the principal made a point practically begging parents to take advantage of the Livonia transportation system and to send their students on the school bus, basically. And basically, this is due to what has become a relatively dangerous drop-off situation for our students at this school. I'm not sure how many of you have driven by in the morning, but it frankly blocks traffic on five-mile road, and the principal indicated as well that students are, you know, just walking into the school. It's just really not a safe situation that has been created there. A lot of that due to parent choice to not use the transportation system. And in addition to that, this summer, I received a transportation survey, and I was surprised to see that private school students are afforded the opportunity to take advantage of transportation in Livonia. And private schools are by definition a school of choice. And so this led me to coming here tonight just to bring forward this point. You mentioned that the school board deals with policy. I assume this is a district policy that would be something the board could take into consideration, and I want to really inquire as to why Livonia residents choosing school of choice within the public school system are not necessarily given the same opportunities as students who maybe are doing school of choice through Kappa or students who are choosing parochial schools. All functional school of choice situations. So that's what I'm posing to the board to consider. I think it would lead to a potentially safer situation for our students, which I think is one of your top three items of consideration for Livonia Public Schools, so that's what I'm asking for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I don't have any other blue slips, so we'll move on to item three E, response to prior audience communications. I don't believe that there are any. So that will take us to item four, our consent. So, that will take us to Item 4, Our Consent Agenda. And may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the special meeting of July 24th, 2019. 5B, minutes of the closed session of July 24th, 2019. 5C, minutes of the organizational meeting of July 24th, 2019. 5D, minutes of the regular meeting of July 24th, 19. 5E, minutes of the special meeting of August 12th, 2019. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. The motion carries. And I note, I may have misspoken earlier. I will take the break after Item 6A. I might have said 4A. If I did, I apologize. All right, then that will take us to Item 6A, Appointment of Assistant Principal at Frost Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Kevin English as an assistant principal at Frost Middle School beginning August 29th, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton. And is that going to be Mr. Archibald?
Mr. Archibald, then I'll bring it home.
Very good. Mr. Archibald.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. As you know, this position became vacant with the move of Ms. Wheeler over to Johnson Elementary School. I thank Mr. Willemborg and the individuals who served on the screening and interview committees for their work in ultimate moving on of Mr. English to us as a finalist. We had a chance to talk with Kevin, and he's just been a delight. I'd like to provide a little bit of his background. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Michigan with a major in English and a minor in science, and a Master of Science degree in educational leadership from Concordia University. He has been with the Wayne Westland Community Schools for seven years, five of those years as an ELA teacher, and most recently, the last two years as an assistant principal at Wayne Memorial. Kevin was a participant in the Wayne Rees Aspiring Administrators Academy, I believe in the 2016 cohort. And probably most noteworthy to you all, he served on the Van Buren Public Schools Board of Education from January of 2010 to just December of 2018. Now, if you're doing the math, he actually was on that Board of Education just out of high school at the age of 19. So, and maybe I'm just the only one impressed with that. I think that's pretty darn good. So, Kevin certainly brings a perspective as an administrator, a teacher, and even that of a board member. In a very short time, he has amassed an impressive list of credentials and experience and a career, again, that's spanned a short time, driven by a genuine passion for teaching and learning and a strong desire to make a lasting impact on those whom he serves. So, we're again delighted with your approval to be bringing Kevin on board, and if approved, we'll start August 29th with us. Mrs. Oakquist?
Thank you. Well, we are very excited about this recommendation that we bring to you this evening. As you know, as we've shared, as we fill these administrative roles, this really is one of our most important responsibilities. And anytime we hire whatever the position is in our district, we know the impact that ultimately they will have on the students and staff that we serve, and we are thrilled to be bringing Kevin on board. He is high-energy. He's passionate about the work that he does with students. He's extraordinarily well-read and has, as Mr. Archibald shared, in a short time, his experiences as both an educator and as a leader have provided him with the opportunity to truly understand the needs of students, the needs of staff, and how those too are the responsibility of our leaders in our schools. We also believe that the dynamic team of both Mr. Abate and, under the podium there, and Mr. English will be really a wonderful leadership team to have at Frost Middle School, which we know is so important. They both truly enjoy the opportunity to work with middle school students, understand what makes them tick, and we are absolutely thrilled to be recommending to you, Mr. English, this evening. His credentials, but most importantly, the person that he is, we believe will be an outstanding asset to Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We haven't taken the vote yet, but congratulations. Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the, accept Mr. English as assistant principal at Frost. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. The motion carries. Congratulations.
Members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Oakquist and the Executive Cabinet, I'm so thrilled to be joining the Frost team. So, I can tell you every step of the way through the interview process how it became so clear that climate and culture was so important. I know as President Johnson spoke about that tonight and modeling and leading by example. I came to learn very quickly that Mr. Abate and I have so much in common, and so I'm looking forward to learning and leading alongside him. Both of our wives are second-grade teachers, mind of which Stacy is here tonight. She is the best educator I know. We have a history at the University of Michigan, a love of Michigan, and also, as we all know now, served on school boards. So, I'm so excited to be part of the family, so excited to kind of learn and lead in Livonia. So, thank you so much for approving me tonight.
Thank you. And as I indicated, we're going to take a short break and a little recess, and we'll be back in five or so. Thank you. Good evening, and we're back from recess and we'll move on with our agenda. We are now at item 6B, teachers for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2019-20 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. And is this going to be Mr. Archibald?
It will. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It's been an exciting and fun, active summer in the employment area.
Yes.
These teachers, these individuals were interviewed along with other applicants for vacancies that existed in our instructional program. We believe that these teachers listed are the most qualified for the positions indicated and recommend that these individuals be approved for employment. These positions are all in the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
I just...
Mr. Centers.
Want to give a special welcome to Becky Nelson, who is a teaching partner of mine in Farmington.
Oh, nice.
Very cool.
She's great. Everyone's going to love her.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item 6C, leave of absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Michelle Chafin, 2019-20 school year. Christopher Farrell, 2019-20 school year. Michelle Morello, 2019-20 school year.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Anything, Mr. Archibald?
Just that these requests are in accordance with the LEA contract, and as such, we're requesting that these leaves be approved for the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the leave of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item 6D, retirements. I have a motion, please.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Deborah Hedges, Kathleen Park.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. These two individuals retire with a combined 49 years of experience with the Livonia Public Schools. I would like to offer my sincere congratulations and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation and recognition of their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to adopt the resolutions of appreciations for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis? Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item 7, our business matters. And item A is approval of bid results for boardroom AV equipment. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of audiovisual equipment from TEL, Tel Systems, Ann Arbor, Michigan, in the amount of $109,849, plus a contingency amount of $5,500, for a total project cost of $115,349, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contract.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mr. Francis will be helping us with this.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Tel Systems was the lowest responsible bidder in the public RFP that the district put out for the audiovisual equipment. The audiovisual equipment for this room is both for in this room as well as the working room with the behind-the-scenes digital items. The items that we've been using are approximately, depending on which ones, 15 to 20 years old. We were due for it. So, again, it's a planned purchase, and it would be from the general funds capital improvements. We conducted post-bid interviews with Tel Systems. We are confident in their ability to deliver the products and also deliver on their labor for it, and we recommend them to you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Just as far as the use of this equipment, Mr. Francis, because we are conscious of spending our dollars wisely. Obviously, this equipment is going to be used for board purposes, for transmitting our meetings into the public, because a lot of this behind-the-scenes equipment is utilized to get our meetings recorded, put on our website, sent out through spectrum and so forth. There are other purposes for this room and for the equipment in this room. Can you, for the folks who were not part of the committee of the whole meeting, can you fill them in on what the other purposes of this equipment will be?
Yeah, my pleasure. This room and the equipment in it get used, obviously, for the board meetings, as you mentioned, and we can broadcast, and we do broadcast those. And the new equipment will give us more flexibility in how we do that. For example, off-site, I know the board does and is interested in continuing to have an off-site meeting a couple of times each school year. This equipment will enable us to more easily connect back and feed that broadcast. But beyond board meetings, this room gets used for other types of district meetings. Committee meetings occur down here. As an example, the district's school improvement team, which is made up of administrators, teachers, other staff members, community members, and students, we meet in this room. Elementary principals is a large group. Sometimes they meet down here. Other groups meet in this room. We have the administrative leadership team that meets in this room. And the way we're going to wire it up with regards to the flat-screen TVs, it will enable presentations to be, not only for board meetings, but also for those other types of meetings and gatherings, more easily accomplished.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the bid results for boardroom AV equipment. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to item 8, which is hearing from board members. And item A is second reading of board policy JGI, suspected abuse and neglect. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for board policy JGI, suspected abuse and neglect.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Dr. Terrell, are you going to help us with this?
Absolutely. Good evening. Board policy JGI. We would like to have this updated to include the new Michigan Department of Education and Wayne County Department of Health and Human Services' new online reporting for child protective services. This will allow our staff for suspected abuse or neglect of children in our district to do either a mandated phone call reporting or now an online reporting. As stated in the policy, vulnerable adults continue to require a phone call. So, this, again, allows an online reporting method for child protective services call for suspected abuse and neglect.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to accept and adopt board policy JGI, suspected abuse and neglect. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
He threw me off. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
I have a rhythm going. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 8B, first reading of board policy DFEA, tax anticipation notes. And we have gone over this, but Mrs. Smith, can you bring us up to date?
Thank you very much, President Johnson. As discussed at the study session and our committee meeting, we've got a couple of policies for your consideration tonight that have some minor changes to them that don't change the intent of the policies, but align it with some other verbiage found throughout our board policies. So, the proposed change here is just one word, and I'll read what the new board policy, how it would read. This is board policy DFEA, tax anticipation notes. The Board of Education may, by resolution and without a vote of the community, borrow money and issue its notes in anticipation of the collection of taxes and other revenues as prescribed by law.
Okay. And what, the only change we're changing from elector to community?
Correct.
That's correct. All right. Questions, comments from the board? Are we good with this language?
Yes.
Sounds good. So, that'll be on for a second reading at our next regular meeting.
Yes.
So, that takes us to item 8C, the first reading of board policy DFGA, admissions and gate receipts. And again, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, President Johnson. Again, some minor changes to this board policy to bring the verbiage in line with how it's said in other board policies. So, the change here is changing superintendent or designee to superintendent and/or the superintendent's designee in the first sentence, and then aligning the second sentence with the verbiage from the first. So, the board policy would read, "The Board of Education grants authority to the superintendent and/or the superintendent's designee to approve appropriate events and programs in addition to the regular school curriculum. The procedures for admission charges, if any, for events and programs shall be approved by the superintendent or designee."
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions, comments from the board? Are we good with that language? All right, then that'll be put on for a second reading at our next regular meeting as well.
Thank you.
Then that will take us to item D, first reading of board policy DKF, gifts and bequests. Again, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I believe it's DFK.
DFK. Yes, DFK.
Thank you very much. In this board policy, I'm proposing the addition of and/or staff that verbiage, so that the board policy would read, "The Board of Education welcomes gifts and grants which are tendered for the general welfare of students and/or staff. The Board reserves the right to specify the manner in which gifts are made and accepted, to define the type of gift or grant considered appropriate, and to reject those which are deemed inappropriate and suitable." And I would like to mention that we do have administrative procedures that go along with this that do spell out what is acceptable and what would be not.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Are we good with this language?
Uh-huh.
All right. And that will be on for a second reading at the next regular meeting as well. And our last of the policies is the first reading of board policy DJAA, authorized signatures. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you very much. In this board policy, we are proposing changing the word drafts to electronic payments, and in the second paragraph, changing the word facsimile to electronic, so that the board policy reads, "The Board of Education shall designate the persons authorized to issue checks, electronic payments, or other orders for the payment of money drawn in the name of the school district and the accounts which may be drawn against. A manual signature or electronic signature may be used for the accounts established by the Board. The President and the Secretary of the Board shall be authorized to sign all contracts and legal documents on behalf of the Board of Education School District following approval by the Board."
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Are we good with this language?
No.
Okay. So, that policy will also be on for a second reading at our next regular meeting. That takes us to item 8F, hearing from board members. And we have become accustomed to opening up the floor to board members who would like to make comments or statements. So, I will open it up. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. I just wanted to say Happy New Year. And also to remind everyone that, again, if you missed it earlier in the meeting, that tomorrow is the bounce-back-to-school celebration at Riley. It'll be held at 5:30. And if you don't want to drive, you are... 5 o'clock, I'm sorry. And if you don't want to drive, please, I encourage you to take the shuttle that the district is providing, so that you don't have to worry about where to park, or, you know, we'll take that headache away from you. Please come and enjoy us. Bring the kids. It's a fun time. We've ordered good weather. I think we got our order in on time. And we're looking forward to seeing you there.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just want to thank everyone for our earlier tour this evening at Niji Ero. Several of our contractors have came out and toured us around the building, and it was just fantastic. It was a great undertaking since the school started early, earlier than the regular LPS schedule. And it was just, they did a really nice job. And I am so pleased that we were able to go through and do the renovations on that building. And it sounds like Mrs. Burton ran into a second grader...
I did.
Who was expounding on the great upgrades in the building. He thought they were fantastic.
He was going on and on with all the new things his school has.
And so, I think everybody really appreciates. But I'm really glad that we were able to do that with the bond money and get that building up to speed along with our other ones. And it makes a difference. Like this room, the lighting, again, it's a huge difference. It's just amazing, which is one of the things that they, only one of the things that they did. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Other questions or comments? And Mrs. Bonnefield alluded to it. I just want to thank all the people that have been involved in renovating this particular room, although we're not completely finished yet. And you may or may not be able to see it on camera, but it is so much brighter and so much more welcoming as it sits right now, and we expect some additional changes. So, thank you to all of those who put in so much work to get it to where it is to this point. We appreciate it very, very much. All right. If there are no other comments, and is there any other business to be brought before the board tonight?
No.
Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.